I see Kate's back.
Yeah, and I am still blacked out. So weird.
Well, we're live now, so I'm gonna put the, I'm gonna put the link to the agenda in the chat.
Okay.
So it's easy to find. And once we move through the cases, I'll put that in the, in the chat as well. Yeah, is anything else who's recording is making that buzzing noise? Lindsay, you're the host, maybe if you mute everybody in Josh, you're muted, sorry.
I'm, I unmute myself. What all I was saying was that I don't think I hear beeping on my end, but let me know that I do have my window open and there's, I think, a workout class outside that I hear.
I don't, I don't hear anything.
Bridget, are you ready to go forward?
Everyone is muted, so be mindful of that.
Yes, I am. I'm touching my spacebook.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Welcome to the Jersey City Board of Adjustment Meeting. Today is May 21st, 2020. We're not at City Hall. This is a virtual meeting held in accordance with NJSA 10:4-12, the Open Public Meeting Act as it's conducted in accordance with, with electronic means in accordance with the Senator Byron M. Baer Open Public Meeting Act of 2020, which allows us to conduct this meeting electronically. So let's, let's get started. First call to order. So I'm gonna, we'll do Pledge of Allegiance. I'm gonna face towards City Hall and stand.
I have a flag up.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag to the republic which stands nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all. Thank you. Staff, are there any sunshine announcements?
Yes, I'm gonna share my screen. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice hearing was given to the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, and posted with the clerk. This meeting will be conducted by electronic means for Senator Byron M. Baer Open Public Meetings Act of 2020, which explicitly permits a public body to conduct meeting electronically during emergency. And you can mark this for the record.
Thank you. Can you please take roll call?
All right, Commissioner Jamie? Mr. Velardo? Remember, you're probably muted.
Here.
Yes, there you go.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Nuttshirt?
Here.
Commissioner McCormick?
Here.
Commissioner Rothman?
Good evening, everybody. I'm here.
Vice Chair Donnelly?
Here. And invisible.
Chairman Jacobs?
Here.
All right, so we have eight present, so if anybody wants to leave, you're more than welcome to.
I'm, I'm actually thinking that since I am having technical difficulties that I will
Commissioner Nuttshirt on my screen, is he, is he here?
Yes.
I see everyone except Kate.
Yeah, and so I will, I will exit if that's okay with everyone, and I will see you next Tuesday.
Okay.
Okay. All right, take care. Bye.
Bye. Okay. Bridget, can you please swear in staff? Bridget, you're on mute.
Raise your right hand to be sworn. Please swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give to this proceeding will be the truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any correspondence?
The only thing is, I'm sorry. Case Z19-083, address 87 to 89 Jordan Avenue, is being carried to a date uncertain.
Okay. Are there any other adjournments other than, than that case?
No.
Okay, great. So for anyone listening in, KC19-083, the address is 87-89 Jordan Avenue. That case is not going to be heard today. Be heard potentially in July. Okay. We're gonna, is there any old business? No. Okay, we're gonna proceed with case Z19-104. This is, the address is 78-80 Manhattan Avenue. The attorney is Stephen Joseph.
Is he here? I don't see any.
He's muted.
You are muted, you can, there you go.
Okay, there we go. And do we have Jeff Lewis, the architect, as well?
Even before you start, let's ask you, for this case and any other attorney that's listening in, you're agreeing to have your witnesses sworn in remotely. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And secondly, we have received your notices for this case. And Bridget, we're going to mark that as A1 for this application.
A1 in evidence.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Stephen Joseph of the Traumi Law Firm for the applicant. Jeff Lewis is our architect this evening. There's been a, a long history of this project in October 2017. This board granted major site plan approval with CND variances to construct a three-story, 10-unit building. In May of 2018, a site plan amendment was approved, and now we're back for another site plan amendment. I was not the attorney on the initial application or the previous amendment. This amendment does not trigger any additional variances. As you'll see, when Jeff goes through the plans, we're just kind of rearranging the rooftop area. So I, I think Jeff, you could share your screen and run us all through the plans. First, you gotta get sworn in.
Yes, sir.
Okay, would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And state your full name for the record.
It's Jeffrey Lewis, J-E-F-F-R-E-Y-L-E-W-I-F.
Great, thank you.
Okay, and Jeff, just for the record, you're an architect licensed in New Jersey, and you've appeared before this board in the past?
I have, and my license is currently still active, in good standing.
Great, we accept your qualifications. Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Okay, so should I start?
Yep.
Yes. Okay, so let me just go right ahead and share my screen. Oh, host disabled participant screen sharing. This is saying that the host has disabled participant screen sharing, which would mean I can't share. Is that something you can change?
Yes, I'm, I'm, hello, I'm working on it.
Okay, cool.
Mr. Lewis, are you, are you looking to share the architectural plans that were provided?
Yes.
Okay. While Lindsay, would you, if, if you'd like, we, you know, I don't know what, what everyone's technical capabilities are currently, but you could probably get started and, and, you know, or wait, whatever you prefer while we have it.
You mean just talk through stuff without the plans in front of us?
Yeah, yeah. And, and then, I mean, if anyone has questions, I'm sure at some point in the next five minutes or so Lindsay will have it up.
Okay, okay. So, so that's, that's actually no problem. The changes are really that small that I can walk through them and then show them to you very quickly when it does come up, hopefully. Or even maybe Lindsay can bring up the drawings if, if I can't, and she can just look through it at the end. Um, okay, so we are opposing a few minor changes. None of them are adding any variances. Briefly, just to summarize them, on the ground floor, we're making two small changes. One of them is moving a bike rack from an area that's actually kind of close to the drive aisle and not totally safe, to another area along this side of the drive aisle in a fenced-in gated-in area that's more secure and safer. That's the one change on the ground floor, and the second change on the ground floor is two of the condensers for those two ground floor units are being put in the back, in the back, in the backyard. They're, they meet with code, they're undercover. The one comment that we had is to provide screening for those, so I will provide screening for those. I'll match the existing senses that we have, but probably just do them 42 inches high instead of the full five feet high around, around the AC condensers. Interior-wise, there are no changes on the first floor. There are no changes on the second floor. The third floor, there's one minor change, and that's that the stair used to enter the third floor, and now the stairway, the common stair, is going to the roof. And then the existing roof, it was just a flat roof with a hatch access and just some condensers scattered around, and we are revising that to provide a roof, a roof deck for repub, for the access to the terrace. It's a, so we have a stair up to the roof with a center patio, which is surrounded by green space, which is going to provide setbacks from all the building edges. The patio itself is 1,885 square feet, and it's gonna be porcelain tile with a stone finish. And then the green space is 1,460 square feet, wrapped around the outside, and that's going to be like those planted tray systems. And Justin.
I can't hear you.
You can't hear me?
And that's going to be like A.
And that's, and that's going to be a planted tray system.
Thank you.
Uh, the stair itself on this roof is set back 21 and a half feet from the, the building face, and that's actually the setback building face. That building face is 13 and a half feet back from the property line, so we're 35 feet back from the property line. So you really, it's the stairs, but with a very low profile, you can't see it from the street, you can't see it from the sidewalk, you can't see it from across the street. And I do have a photo of this, this stair. It has been framed out, but not finished. It just has a tieback wrapped around it. The roof itself is just a plain roof deck with no, none of the finish worked on. And that's where we are, and those are the, that's the summary of the changes that we're proposing.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I could share the plans if you'd like.
Sure, if you want to put them up. Yeah, I, I think we should do that for the, for the public.
Yeah, we can put through them. So I think we can go right to the floor plans, but on this, on this plan, you can see the photo on the bottom. There's a photo of this stair, so you can see it's built with a really low profile, but it's still unfinished, obviously. That's okay, okay, that's okay, don't worry. Okay, and then we can just go to the floor plans, and I could show you where things were moved to. So you can see the bubbles on the right, these clouded areas. At the top, you can see where the condensers are, and it's, it's close to where the bike rack used to be. And then to the right, you can see the area where the bike rack is now. It's a much more convenient area to the, to the garage entrance, and it's, it's well out of the way of, of, you know, cars and people. It's a safer spot. On the next plan, you'll see no changes on the second floor. And then on the third floor, you'll see just the stair is just basically the same, but it's going up to the top floor now, and then the roof. Here's where you see the major changes. Again, you see the stairs to the left. The, all the condensers have been kind of pushed out to, to make room for the patio in the center, and then around all the sides, you can see the, the green tray system. That's it. Thank you, Lindsay.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. I think that's clear. You addressed my immediate question, which was, you know, you're looking for something on the roof. Are you putting green elements in there? And that's pretty, you know, pretty clear from the plans. Does anyone, Mr. Joseph, I don't want to cut you off. No. Well, that, that concludes our direct testimony. Okay. Does anyone from the board have any questions for Mr. Lewis?
No.
Okay. Does anyone from the public have any questions about this application?
There is one attendee raising their hand. I will allow, I'll promote them so they can provide, we're opening up for public comment.
Yes.
Switching you over, so you'll be able to speak. All right, just be aware that you are muted, so I will unmute you.
Great. Hi, I have a question in terms of, no, have you done any assessments in terms of, you know, that height of a building, including a rooftop?
Hold on a second, Ms. Meskell. I, I believe, you know, we're gonna give you the opportunity to speak, but we want to make sure that you're sworn in first. And that we're tracking your testimony, so.
I'm sorry, okay. That we're giving testimony here, because I'm asking a question, okay.
So hold on a second, so, so Bridget is gonna, is gonna swear you in, okay?
Okay.
Hold on one second. I can't swear her in because I can't see her, so there.
Oh.
I can't see her either. Do we need?
Hold on one, give me one moment. Just give me one moment. I apologize for not having this up. This has come up once before. Due to the need for this deposition to take place remotely, I mean, not deposition hearing, because of the government's order for social distancing and/or pursuant to Rule 413 of the New Jersey Rules of Civil Procedure, parties can stipulate that the court reporter may swear in the witness over the phone, and that the witness has verified that he or she is in fact who they are, and the witness's testimony will be treated as if the witness is under oath. If that's acceptable to everybody.
Yes.
Yes, all right.
No objection from the applicant.
And Ms. Meskell, would you state and spell your full legal name and provide your address?
Sure, it's, my first name is A.I.D.A., last name is M.E.S.K.E.L. My address is 88 Jordan Avenue.
Okay.
Okay, and you were presumed under oath.
Okay. Um, so I guess one of my questions was, have you guys done any assessments on, you know, the impact of having another building at the height with now additional rooftop access for people that would now cover, I guess, the entire, like, the entire block, which was sort of designed as, you know, there aren't many high-rise buildings, but that would now actually block the entire facing street, or between, I guess, like, 88, 90, and 86, Jordan, that would completely block all visibility. Have you guys done any, any assessment on the impact based on sun or light exposure?
Wait, we're on the, we're on.
Yeah, this is an application, yeah. This is the application for 80 Manhattan Avenue. 87 Jordan is not being heard tonight.
Okay, all right then, um. Okay, well, then I am not muted, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I just, if you want to stay updated when that will be heard, just keep checking the city planning website, or you can just reach out to the general city planning email for when that's going to be heard.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, I'm switching you back to an attendee now.
Okay.
May I make a quick suggestion, please?
Sure.
When we get anybody that's being sworn in, or let's make sure that they're actually gonna be speaking about the subject that we're entailing at that moment.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll certainly do that. I, I, it wasn't clear to me that, that, that wasn't, you know, understood, but, you know, absolutely, that makes a lot of sense.
No, Mr. Chairman, this has happened a couple of times, and we all know to this, but just so people understand, I mean, I've been getting a lot of flash messages on the bottom from different participants that not aware of what's going on.
Okay, sure.
Thank you, thank you.
So are there, Lindsay, are there other members of the public that would like to have a question or a comment on this application? And, and we can make it clear, you know, exactly what, what, you know, we're talking about. This application is 78-80 Manhattan Avenue?
If anybody who, I don't, no one's raising their hand, but if you are on your phone, you would have to dial star nine to raise your hand. So if you are calling in and you wish to provide a comment, please dial star nine. And if you are on your computer or laptop, you go to the bottom of the screen and hit raise hand. So either star nine, and I'll put that in the chat. I'm still not seeing anyone raising their hand, so I would assume.
So we'll close the public.
Okay, so we're closing the public comment for this application. Staff, are there any, do you have any comments on, on this amendment to the plan, the site plan?
I, I do not have any comments. There aren't any deviations with this amendment. I just would like to read suggested conditions of approval into the record. I did share these via email with Mr. Joseph earlier today, so he has seen them. So it is just the standard conditions of all testimony provided by the applicant and their expert witnesses is binding. All materials and color selection shown and filed shall be shown on final plans, and no changes are permitted without consultation with planning staff. The applicant shall provide an affidavit from the architect of record that the constructed project is consistent. The plans will be revised, as Mr. Lewis mentioned earlier, to represent screening of the mechanical equipment on the ground level per LDO requirements, and all conditions of approval associated with the original site plan under case Z17048 are to be upheld with this approval.
The applicant agrees to the conditions. Great. Any questions from, from the other commissioners? If not, does anyone want to make a motion?
Make a motion approval for Z19-104 with staff conditions.
Second.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Rothman?
Yes.
Commissioner McCormick?
Yes.
Commissioner Jamie?
You're muted, Nick.
Yes.
Commissioner Velardo?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Nuttshirt?
Yes.
And Chairman Jacobs?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries all in favor with conditions.
Thank you.
Great, good luck with the project.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a good evening. We're gonna continue with case Z19-085. Luckily, Mr. Joseph is also on that case.
Right, and Mr. Joseph, we put your notices, and Bridget's going to mark them as A1 in evidence.
Thank you.
A1 in evidence.
So for this one, we have Mukti and, and Charles.
All right, give me one moment.
Okay, and, and in case it's not clear to the public, the address is 107 Jefferson Avenue.
All right, just promoted both Mukti and Charles as panelists, and I changed the option. They should be able to share their screen now. There was just a setting that was turned off. Apologies.
Got it, thank you. Okay, Stephen Joseph of the Traumi Law Firm for the applicant. This is 107 Jefferson Avenue. It's a, it's a property located in the R1 zone. This one's a little interesting, but normally I start off by saying this is an undersized lot. In, in this case, it's mostly oversized. We have a lot area of 2,505 square feet and a lot width of 30 feet, but we are undersized in depth with only 83.5 feet. So as we go through the plans, you'll see the variances that we're requesting, they are both variances are related to the undersized depth of this lot. So I, I think Mukti, if you could begin, if you can get sworn in first, and then begin sharing your screen.
Yeah, sure.
Hey, raise your right hand, Mukti.
Yeah.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
State and spell your full name for the record.
Mukti Bajag, M-U-K-T-I-B-A-J-A-G.
Thank you.
Okay, Mukti, you're an architect licensed in New Jersey.
Yes, I am, and my license is current.
And we accept your qualifications, thank you.
Thank you. It's great to see everyone after a long time. I will just go ahead and share my screen. Just give me one second, I think. Sorry about this, just give me one second.
I'll see your screen.
Something has happened, just give me one second, I don't know. So these are, this is 107 Jefferson Avenue. The block is 5706, and the lot is 11. But these are the original set of drawings which were filed for.
We're not, Mukti, we're not seeing the, the drawings.
You're not?
No. No, we're seeing a, an aerial Google map.
Oh, just give me one second, please. Now, is, you can see it?
No.
Not yet, probably soon. There we go.
There it is.
Yeah.
You can.
Bingo.
Okay. Sorry about that. So this is 107 Jefferson Avenue, and And our block is eight five seven zero six, and the lot is eleven. So these were the original drawings which were filed for the zoning application. But, you know, with the zoom, it gets a little tough to look at it. And so what I did, I just reorganized everything and put it in the enlarged mode. So everybody can see it a little bit more clearly. Uh, so same drawings, it's just that whatever information is supposed to be shared and discussed about, but I have put it in a different PDF. So that's, uh, so I'm just going on that PDF.
So just to be clear, Mukti, these are the same exact drawings that were submitted to the city. There are no changes to them, except that you changed the formatting. So it's easier to view remotely on, on your phone and on a computer.
Yeah, that's correct. That's correct. So this is one oh seven Jefferson Avenue, this is a lot.
Mukti?
Yeah.
You can just come a little closer to your microphone, and I'm going to need you to be slow and very clear.
Okay.
Here when I'm in there in person, but I'm gonna need you to do that. So I understand exactly what you're saying, every word.
Okay. So this is, this is a lot. And this is thirty feet wide and eighty-three feet, six inches is the depth of the lot. It's in between Central Avenue and the Oakland Avenue. Central Avenue is on the west and Oakland on the east of the property. So in this project, like Steve mentioned, the lot area is pretty much complying. It is twenty-five hundred, two thousand five hundred and five square feet, and twenty-five hundred is what is permitted. The lot width is wider, which is thirty feet. But the lot depth is, is undersized, which is eighty-three feet, six inches, like, hundred feet, which is permitted in R1 zone. Uh, the project complies with most of the park requirements. What we are requesting is a rear yard variance. Rear yard variance required is twenty-six feet, five inches. And we are proposing sixteen, sixteen feet, nine inches, so we have. Also, the, you know, there is a variance for garage door and the driveway width. The curb cut remains the same, which is a ten feet. I'll just go over the plans, so you can see the curb cut is the same. The driveway width is almost the same, only the door, it expands to twelve feet because we have given, because of the wider lot. And to make an easy circulation for the cars in and out, we have given a wider door. Uh, the project complies with the lot coverage, which is eighty-two point eight three, and also the building coverage, which is fifty-nine percent. This is in, again, R1 zone. The total grass area of the building is four thousand three hundred and ninety-nine square feet. And each floor is, on average, four, two thousand three hundred fifty square feet. Again, this is just a tax map, so this is a lot, and it's between Central and Oakland Avenue. This is the existing survey of the property. This is the existing two-story structure. It's just a single-family dwelling now, which will be demolished. It has a depressed curve in the, in the front. And this is thirty feet by eighty-three feet, six inches. So this is the proposed site plan for this project. I will just zoom this little bit. So the curb cut, so this project has a two-car garage in the front, and the curb cut, we have kept the same, which is ten feet. Even the driveway is ten feet, but towards the main entrance of the garage door, the garage door is twelve feet, and that's why there's the variance requested for this twelve feet. Only in the front of the garage door. For this project, again, it's a two-family house. The unit one, which is a duplex, is a three-bedroom, less office, and two and a half bath. And the total net area is sixteen hundred and four square feet. Uh, the unit two is three-bedroom, two-bath, and the net area is thirteen hundred and seventy-two square feet. There's a common garage for both the units, which is approximately nine hundred square feet. The backyard, which will be shared by both the units, which is one fifty square feet. Both the units has a balcony, which is sixty-two square feet. Also, unit two has a private rooftop deck, which is four hundred and fifty square feet.
How many square feet?
Four hundred and fifty.
Four, five, zero?
Four, five, zero, yes. So this is a typical flow plan. It's, it's a pretty much a similar layout what we have for the two families. It's just a little, little wider because of the lot sizes wide. So there's a two-car garage in the front, the family room, or the common recreation room at the back. And the main entrance for both the units is on the first floor. This is the entrance to unit one, and this goes to unit two. So these are slightly bigger units with, with the extra office space, which I think is great. Especially these days, and this is going to be a good space here. Also, we have a bike parking in the garage and detail for the bike racks. So the upper second floor is a unit two, along with the private rooftop deck. Unit two, again, is twelve hundred and seventy-two square feet, and the private rooftop deck in the front, with a sloping roof at the back of the building. This shows the existing building here, which is, again, two stories, single-family house. On the left is a two, two-family houses, and the building at the back, the rear yard variance we're requesting, but aligned with this particular two buildings on the left. And on the right, there's a park, a park. So this is the front facade of the building. We just use a traditional brick, which is the lighter brownish tone for the brick, which is a nutmeg color to it. And then there's a hardy plank siding and fiber cement panels in the front. The black windows and the small corners in the top of the building. These are side elevations. I just kept it as is. There's nothing, and just the typical side elevations with the light gray siding and the light blue stuck where the first floor. I think that pretty much concludes my testimony.
Thank you, Mukti. Alright, we have Charles Height is our planner. There you are.
Hey, raise your right hand to be sworn. You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to given this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And could you state and spell your full name for the record?
Yes, Charles Height, last name spelled H-E-Y, D is in David, P is in Thomas.
Thank you.
And Charles, you're licensed in the state of New Jersey, and your license is active?
Yes, licensed professional planner.
Thank you, we accept your qualifications.
Okay, I'll, I'll jump right into it. Board members, good evening. Uh, with this project, we really were dealing with the calculation of rear yard, which in the R1, the board's familiar, it's, it's really a calculation between the front yard, what's required, and then the remainder of, of subtracting that from thirty-five feet. So that calculation lands you at what's required. I can share my screen to pull up the site plan, one second. Just so you have something while I'm speaking, I'm referencing. Can the board see the screen?
Yes.
Okay, so in the front yard, we're providing approximately nine feet. And that's really to match the predominant side yard, front yard setback, which is what the R1 district requires. And that's really to match the adjacent property to, to the, to the left. When we're looking at the rear yard, we did the, essentially the same thing. We matched the adjacent rear yard, so it's not to eclipse it or create any sort of substantial impacts on that adjacent rear yard area. The property to the right of one oh nine Jefferson, the architect referred to that as the parking lot, and that's really a, a used repair shop parking lot. It's associated with a towing and repair service next door. So there's really no residential impacts on that lot. This is, in my opinion, my professional opinion, this would amount to a C1 hardship standard, where the lack of depth on the property, where it's approximately eighty-three feet in depth, eighty-three and a half feet, is short of the minimum standard of a hundred feet. If we did have a hundred feet on this property, we would definitely comply with the rear yard setback. The other attributes of this project, while we have a smaller rear yard, we do provide for that rooftop amenity space, which the one tenant would have access to this grass and patio space in the back on, on, at the grade level. And then the other tenant would have that amenity space on the rooftop. So there's certainly ample recreational amenity space on, on this property and with the proposed building. So I do think that there's, there's a hardship here in, in trying to comply with the rear yard setback. Uh, if we shifted the building forward, any, we'd obviously not comply with the front yard setback, and that would be a variance as well. So we, we just figured maintaining the consistent front yard setback and dealing with the variance in the rear yard was the appropriate way to go. With respect to the curb cutting and the driveway width and the the garage door width, they're both twelve feet, where ten feet's permitted. Uh, you can see the driveway is tapered to comply with the ten feet when the driveway meets the sidewalk. Uh, and that's really an effort to reduce the distance that pedestrians have to cross safely before a vehicle may be entering that sidewalk area. It also provides for ample space to locate a street tree, which we have. Um, and that's another benefit to the design. Um, we also did, as, as Mukti referred to, the landscaping, we also did include that in the front yard, which the R1 calls for. Uh, and that also helps create some separation from the driveway, some visual separation as well as physical separation. So all in all, this design, while it does require variance, we think it's a, it's an enhancement. It does provide for additional circulation for the vehicles coming in and out, some, some room to enter the driveway safely. So it's, it's, uh, we think it's a better design solution. So to that point, I think this would meet the C2 test, these two variances, in terms of the benefits outweighing the detriments. With respect to the negative criteria, this project does not present a substantial impairment of the zone plan or zoning ordinance. It's a two-unit residential building in the R1 district, and that's essentially a permitted use, and it complies with virtually all other bulk requirements but for the rear yard and these two driveway variances that requesting. I don't believe it poses any substantial detriment to the public welfare. In this case, we really did try and balance the location of the proposed structure on the property, having the least impact, matching the front yard and rear yard with the adjacent property to the left, as well as configuring the front, front, front yard area with the driveway to, to reduce the impacts from vehicles on, on the pedestrian right of way. So that's really my testimony in a nutshell. I think that this project advances general planning goals to provide for an appropriate density, to provide for smooth and safe circulation of vehicles and traffic routes. And it certainly is going to be an improvement over the existing structure, which is a bit outdated with, with a newer building to improve the desirable visual environment as well. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
And that concludes our direct testimony.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board?
I have one question. Probably properly directed to Mr. Joseph. Looking at some city databases today, I noticed that as of on the record today, there was a tax lien outstanding on this property. And it seems that the tax lien was subsequent to the current owners buying the property. Now, it could have been paid because they don't necessarily update the records immediately, but can you, do you have any awareness of this, or can you comment on that?
I have, I have no awareness of that. Sometimes there is a, a delay in the city databases being processed. Typically, the, the tax office is pretty good about recording when they get money. And i- if it was from the prior owner of the property, it would have been paid at closing as a matter of, you know, closing procedures. But this is not something that my client brought up to me. And, you know, we did get, as part of this application, we were required to submit a tax certificate from the tax assessor saying taxes were paid. So that's certainly something that, that would have come up when we submitted the initial application.
When was that submitted, the initial application?
Uh, if I may, Chairman, Mr. Joseph, when there is an outstanding tax bill, we usually have it written into the resolution because it is one of the items that needs to be completed. And so you may get a condition of approval before signature plans.
Great, thank you.
So, um, I, I have, I have a, a tax cert from October of twenty nineteen that says taxes were paid through that date. I'm sure we got an updated one at, at some point, but I don't have that.
Okay.
Andy, I, I'm happy to add that as a condition that we'll, we'll check on the.
Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you, Jeff, for bringing that to our attention. Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, are there any questions or comments from the public?
To provide a comment or ask a question about one oh seven Jefferson, you can raise your hand. Uh, if you're on your computer, you tap to the bottom of the screen and hit raise hand. If you're on the phone, dial star nine. And Chairman, I'm not seeing anybody raising their hand from the public.
Yep, and, and I see that there's three phone call-in listeners. Um, and I don't know, you asked them, and they would be able to show that they raised their hand by star nine, right?
Star nine.
Okay, so seeing that there's no comment from the public, I, I don't know, we'll give people thirty seconds, and then we'll close the public. And, and staff, if you have any comments, we'll, we'll do that. I'll, I'll give them another fifteen seconds. Thank you, Matt. Okay, are there, there any staff comments?
So I did not hear a staff report, saying this is a pretty straightforward application. The property size, in terms of lot depth, it's eighty-three point five feet deep, whereas a standard lot in R1 would be one hundred feet deep. So that's tied to their rear yard variance, so this is a hardship, thus justifying variance. The remaining setbacks are conforming. So the other variances are the garage door and the driveway width. They require ten feet, but they're proposing twelve. So as Mr. Height explained, due to the undersized lot depth and oversized lot width, the additional two feet allows for improved maneuvering of vehicles. Overall, staff is satisfied with the architect and planner testimony regarding the positive and negative criteria. We recommend approval with the following conditions. All testimony provided is binding. No changes may be made to the plans without consultation with planning staff. And add that other condition for an updated proof of payment of taxes to be filed prior to signing of final plans.
The applicant agrees.
Great. Are there any questions from the board, staff? Great. Are there any questions from the board, staff? Does anyone want to make a motion?
Make a motion on Z nineteen dash zero eight five for approval with staff conditions.
Commissioner Jamie? Commissioner Velardo? You have to unmute, just press the space bar.
Yes.
There you go.
Thank you. Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Natcher? I couldn't hear anything.
Neither can I, I don't.
Yes.
Commissioner Rothman?
Yes.
And Chairman Jacobs?
Yes.
Seven four and none opposed, motion carries with conditions.
Thank you all so much. This has been uh, the best part of my otherwise boring week. Thank you.
Entertaining. Thank you, good luck.
Take care, everyone.
All right, switching you all back to attendees.
Lindsay, ready?
Uh, just give me one second, sorry.
Lindsay, I can hang on for the next application.
Okay. Okay, signed up. Okay, we're good. Sorry about that.
Okay, we're gonna proceed with case Z nineteen dash one zero eight. Preliminary and major uh, site plan with DNC variances. Um, the address is two twenty-six Bay Street. Um, the attorney is Charles Harrington.
I just promoted Mr. Harrington to panelist. Is there anyone else I should be? So, uh, Jeff Lewis?
Yeah, Jeff Lewis.
Well, Chuck, while we're getting that straight, uh, you do agree to have your witnesses sworn in remotely, correct?
Yes.
And uh, Bridget, we have looked at uh, Mr. Harrington's notices. They do conform and will you mark that as A one, please?
In evidence.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's kind of jump right in. We're uh, first Charles Harrington of Conne Foley, on behalf of the applicant. Um, so we have an application uh, before you tonight that may seem a little similar, uh, because, or a little familiar. Uh, because a few years ago in twenty seventeen, there was an application before this board for two eighteen Bay Street. For a project that, that is very similar, if not, um, you know, a replica of what we're presenting tonight. Uh, it's a twenty-five hundred uh, square foot lot in the R two zone. The R two zone is, is not a zone that's very prominent within the city. There's, there's little sections along Palisade Avenue, and then there's this little stretch along um, Bay Street um, downtown. So this property um, has an existing two-family home that's somewhat dilapidated. Uh, we do have a determination of significance to permit the demolition uh, of the building. And we believe what we're proposing uh, now uh, is, will be a great improvement for, for the property and the street. Uh, there are um, the three variances, or, or we're asking for some bulk variances uh, with regard to setbacks, but uh, there's also the three variances, uh, the use, the density and and the height. Um, and they're interesting in that uh, the density, we're, we're permitted three, three units. We're asking for the additional unit, uh, because we are asking for a five-story building with, with parking on the ground floor for four, four uh, spaces. And in four units that each have three-bedroom units. Um, and while it's not, you know, relative or relevant to the uh, positive criteria, I note that my client and his family intend on occupying all the units here. Uh, when they, they build it out if, if approved. Um, but also you, you, we can speak to the use variance we're requesting. It's, it's somewhat of an anomaly, uh, or an interesting issue here. Is it, it's a four, um, it's four, up to four units, uh, so is it, is it a, you know, a townhouse or is it a multifamily? Um, we, you know, we're proposing something that is consistent, you know, with the intent of uh, the R two zone. We're um, with up to one to four units. Um, but it's a gray area whether or not it, it's defined as a multifamily building or a town, townhouse. So that we uh, we uh, we think it, it may fall under the townhouse um, definition, but for as a belt and suspenders, uh, we, we uh, notice for, for the experience as well. So again, it's uh, we're, uh, we are asking for then the use, the height and and the density and a number of bulk variances that, that uh, Mr. Height will, will address um, as part of his testimony. Um, but it is uh, very similar to um, if not the exact same as, as the two eighteen Bay Street. Um, I also note that my client did present to the Harsmouth Cove Association. We did get a letter of support. We actually made some further modifications to the design. We had uh, somewhat of a modern design and they preferred a more traditional uh, design with, with brick. So we, we changed the facade design so that, um, in, in response to their, their comments. Um, so with that said, um, I will bring up Mr. Lewis again. He's gonna take you through the project and then Mr. Height is also going to uh, testify again tonight with regard to the variances.
Hi, okay, and I think I'm still under oath and still qualified? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna share my screen here. Sharing application. There we go. Okay, so we can see what the floor plans, I mean the drawings?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so two twenty-six uh, Bay Street. Uh, we can see a photo to the right side here and that's the existing building. As you can see, it's a uh, two, two, two and a half story wood frame, uh, wood, uh, wood-sided building on the front. Uh, and we are proposing again to demolish this building and build a new five-story, four-unit building with four parking spaces. I'm not gonna go through the variances because Charles, I think, can take care of that. I'm gonna go uh, directly to the floor plans on the next sheet. And I'm actually just gonna zoom in a little on these for you. Make it a little clearer. Okay, so we have three plans here. To the left, we have the existing site plan, in the center is the site demolition plan. And then to the right is what we're proposing to build. So I'm gonna start to the left with what's existing on our site and I'm gonna go from back to front. Uh, so what we have is chain link fence in the back. And then we have two sheds and a pretty large concrete patio area. And then you could see the two-story building. And then when you get to the front of the property, you can see that our stair and this planted area with a tree. Uh, it's, it's, this is the entry up to our building currently, but you can see this whole section is about six and a half feet off of our property into the public right of way. And then on top of that, we have a tree, uh, a, a street tree that has kind of a wooden uh, box pit. So the sidewalk here is, is pretty small, it's a little less than four feet wide at this choke point here. Uh, the demolition plan is easy. Every single thing that I just mentioned that is there right now is going to be demolished. Uh, everything's gone. And so then going to the proposed site plan, this time we can start at the front and work our way back. We are planting a new street tree to replace the one that we are removing. And then a new concrete curb is the ten-foot uh, curb cut. And then you could see the building we're building, uh, well, actually, let me say, uh, we are uh, restoring much of the public right of way. So where it was a choke point of less than four feet for the sidewalk, we now have a ten-foot sidewalk in front of our building. Uh, the building is the full width of the, of the property, twenty-five feet with a depth of seventy-eight feet. Um, and it's uh, at grade at the front, so we have a residential entry to the left and then garage entry to the right. Uh, and then going to the back of the building, uh, we have a twenty-two foot rear yard and this area is uh, permeable pavers. It's surrounded by a five-foot board-on-board fence. And it's actually uh, doubling as three uh, compact parking spaces. These are eight by sixteen compact parking spaces located on a, on permeable pavers. And I'm going to breeze through a whole bunch of sheets and go to the site plans. I mean, floor plans, excuse me. Uh, up too far. Okay, and I'm gonna zoom in on these again for you. Sorry about that. Okay, so here we're zoomed in on the first floor. And you can see Bay Street is here on the left. Uh, so you see here's the new street tree, here's the, the curb cut. And then here is our new uh, garage door and driveway. So this is a driveway all the way to the back. And then you could see this here is the permeable paper area that I just mentioned. And you could see uh, hat, uh, boxed in those three parking spaces. Uh, then we have a twenty-two foot wide drive aisle here. And the one fourth spot, which is a handicapped parking, parking space, so eight by eighteen with, with the uh, the strike area required. And then here you see, lastly, we have the uh, a door that will bring us to the stair and into the main building lobby. Um, with that, let me just go back to the front and discuss. Uh, the building itself, we have uh, two stairs and an elevator. And what this means, because we're a five-story building, we need two stairs and both of them need to exit the building separately. So at the front of the building on the left here, we actually have two front entry doors. The one to the left is going directly to stair number one. And then the one on the right will come to this building lobby, as you can see, which has access to the elevator and then stair number two. Uh, briefly, also on this sheet, we have our basement plan. Uh, with the stair and elevator going to the basement, uh, utility, trash room, uh, a small common area for people, uh, for the building residents, and then bike storage area. The building floor plans, four, floors two, three, four, and five are all exactly the same, so I'm just gonna show, walk through one of them. Uh, they are both, they're, they're serviced by both stairs and uh, and the elevator. Uh, we have a one thousand four hundred and sixty-three square foot, three-bedroom, two and a half uh, bathroom unit. Uh, you can see, starting at the front, we have a pretty large uh, open living dining kitchen area. U-shaped kitchen with a breakfast bar with seating at it. Behind that, off of the hallway, we have a utility room with our furnace, which will provide uh, heating and air conditioning, so ducted heating, air conditioning. Uh, small uh, half bath and a walk-in closet for the unit. Uh, then you see bedroom number one, bathroom, bedroom number two, then a master suite with closets, uh, bathroom, and then a balcony off of the rear. Again, this is the same for all uh, four floors above the first floor. Then the roof, here I'm showing the roof plan. Again, both stairs and the elevator come to the roof. Uh, we have a small uh, little entry lobby for the elevator to provide access. And then a small extra space, uh, small storage space above the stair in the front. And a small mechanical room that has the water heaters for the uh, for apartments in the rear. Uh, the roof deck itself is uh, again, a pedestal paver system. It's one thousand one hundred and four square feet of pavers. Uh, we also have some amenities up here. One is a, a kind of kitchenette, it's just like, it's a countertop with a uh, with the kitchen, I mean, sorry, with a sink, few. And then second, we have a jacuzzi in the back corner over here. And then lastly, uh, you can see as a buffer at the front, we have two hundred square feet of, again, of the green uh, the green tray system. Um, very briefly, this is, shows the roof of uh, the elevators and stair. So you can see elevator bulkhead, this is a generator for the elevator, and then the four air conditioning units are on this roof. Okay, now to sheet A two hundred, here's our, our front and rear elevation. And as you can see, the, the left, our front elevation is a very traditional-looking front elevation. Uh, the base of the building, the main material is a oversized uh, cast stone block. These are light gray and they're twenty-four inches tall. Uh, then we have these, uh, again, I mentioned the double door, the double doors. You see the, the double uh, three-quarter glass wood doors. And then you see the same uh, to match with the uh, garage door, we have a arch top, arch top doors with glass, with glass top. And the doors, both sets of doors are gonna be painted brown. And above, uh, you can see we have red brick, this is smooth red brick, cast stone of, again, the same light gray for the fills and lint holes. And then the window frames and the, the cornice above are going to be uh, woods are gonna be painted a uh, hunter green color, which is a pretty common color in this neighborhood. Uh, and then looking to the rear, you can see we have a stucco finish that's also light gray. And then for our trim packages, we have all black and that's for the window frames, railings, balconies, and doors. Uh, briefly, on the side elevations, you can see this is the right side. Uh, for one thing, you can see, well, most of the side will be a stucco finish. We are, however, in the front of the building, we are doing a brick return for the first six feet of the building and that's on both sides. I'll show you the other one after. But on this side, you can see we're showing a little person across the street over here and his sightline. And this is showing that our rooftop structures are pretty far back and aren't going to be seen from people uh, from across the street. And then you can see here at the other side, again, the same thing with the uh, with the six-foot brick return and stucco finish on the side. And that is actually the end of the architectural presentation. Do you wanna do questions now or just at the end?
At the end.
Just at the end.
Okay, okay, so I'll take this off and let uh, Charles share what he needs to share.
Yeah, we'll move on to Charles' site to address the variances. Hi, good eve, good evening, everyone. Again, I couldn't speak there. Um, Charles Height, professional planner. Um, we did, uh, I did just wanna walk the board through uh, the one issue with respect to um, the, the definition of townhouse, just briefly, so they have an understanding of what we're, we're grappling with here. Um, so I'm gonna share my screen again. Uh, I'm gonna pull up the land development ordinance. And really quickly, um, just get into this definition so you can understand exactly the nuances. Um, but essentially, the definition of townhouse um, has a couple caveats. Um, one being the um, the townhouse has to have a, a adjacent buildings. And that it has to provide two means of egress, one in the front and one in the rear. Um, so other than that, as was mentioned earlier, and getting to the T's here, sorry. So the board can see this. So a residential building, in, and I'm reading the definition of townhouse now. A residential building in which each building has its own front and rear access to the outside. So we do comply with that. Um, you're able to obviously access the front. Um, but then the um, access to the rear is through the garage where there's a, a paver patio. Um, a paver area that if no vehicles are parked can be um, utilized for, for some outdoor space. The next is separated from adjacent buildings only by vertical fire-resistant building walls. So we essentially comply with that in our design. But in this instance, the actual adjacent buildings are not um, adjacent to our proposed structure. So um, if, if we were thinking long-term, um, there might be uh, new buildings that go in. Um, I'm not saying that's a, that's going to happen, but they might be designed and then we would allow for them to match and be adjacent to, to our quote-unquote townhouse. Um, as was mentioned, also, one to four dwellings are contemplated in the townhouse definition. So just to give the board a benefit of some site photos, we prepared a photo log. I'm happy I had, I got to save the paper. We would have normally passed this out, but I have it on the screen. Um, let me just go up. So this is the subject property, it's the green two-story structure. Uh, that's what, this is the street tree in front. Um, as uh, Mr. Lewis mentioned earlier, these steps actually encroach into the sidewalk, really reducing the sidewalk width here. And that was one of the changes we were able to uh, improve in, in the proposed design. This street tree is being shifted um, to make a little bit more uh, way for the proposed driveway. This street tree is being shifted to make a little bit more way for the proposed driveway in terms of changes here. The adjacent building to the left, to the west, is essentially what we're we're similar to. This is a four-story structure immediately to the west. To the left, it does have hornis, the red brick. This is more or less what we were asked to be consistent with and revise our elevation and material selection, which we we did to to be more consistent with that building. These are some of the townhouses. And again, these are all townhouses that I'm referencing. It's just this townhouse on this side has approximately three foot space for an alleyway to access a rear cottage house. So that alleyway has to remain. It's just you find cottage houses throughout the city. And this access does provide access for that that house, that that structure in the rear. So this obviously is a three and a half four-story structure as well, hornis, and and more of the historic townhouse. So again, we we do feel we comply with the townhouse. We would fit in here with respect to the definition of townhomes and and the use. Moving along into some of my testimony. We do actually require, and I'll bring up the zoning table here if you can see it. We do actually require two D variances, which are calculated, the the maximum density, where the maximum density in the our two districts is fifty-five units per acre. And what we're proposing, seventy units per acre. Now, when you're counting density, you you take the total unit count divided by the lot area. But in raw units, we're really only discussing one additional unit. So that's the that's the increase above what's permitted. This lot is permitted to have three units. What's being proposed is four, complies with the townhouse requirement. We did do an analysis on density. And you may have heard this testimony. Two years ago, it was very similar with the planner who provided that testimony because not much has changed. If any, this this is just another example of why a little bit higher density is appropriate for the area. Out of the, in mind, let me just show you a quick view of the zoning map here. So this is a very small zone portion of the R two. The R two zone is actually referenced by definition. The purpose is to regulate development along Palisades Avenue, which is up in the Heights. This is certainly not Palisades Avenue. But nonetheless, based on the zoning map, our property is located in the R two district. And more or less eleven other properties are within this district as well. On this one block, there are five other zoning districts. So not to rely on justifications that other properties are in other zones, but to give you the flavor that we have a mix of influence in terms of development. We have the NC district, we have a redevelopment plan here to the north, as well as the historic district, the Harpkins Cove Historic District. So there's a really good mix of of development right in this little area. You may have, if you remember in Mr. Harrington's opening, previously, there was a very similar project approved at two hundred and two eighteen Bay Street. And that's this property here within the R two. And it required this very similar relief density as well as height, and I'll get into that in a little bit. So with respect to that project, it was four units proposed with the same density relief needed. The other properties in the R two that require that have additional densities are this lot right here, which is two twenty-one to two twenty-five Bay Street. And that's across the street from this property, flipping back to the photos. So this is a larger property. This is also a five-story building. This has thirty-four units with a density of a hundred and six units per acre. But this is right across the street in the R two. Certainly a larger lot, but density is a scalable requirement. So this is certainly more dense than what we're proposing. There are other four-unit properties, four-unit buildings. Some of these are 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 some of the four units and multi-unit buildings within the the neighborhood. From from a statistical standpoint, out of the eleven properties in this portion of the R two, six of them, fifty-five percent, are four units or more. So to say we can, we we are consistent on the low end of the multifamily townhouse uses, I would I would think that that it meets that test in terms of being consistent with the level of development within the area. When you also look at granting a density variance, you also look at, can the site accommodate the impacts associated with added density? In this application, the the project team, the architect worked with, obviously, the client, but also the neighborhood in understanding what would be a benefit in terms of providing off-street parking. And really, there's a struggle when you're dealing with low unit count numbers. Enter having vehicles pull in off the street removes an on-street parking and also creates conflicts for pedestrians. But in this instance, we, everyone really agreed that introducing a curb cut on this property, providing for for off-streets parking spaces would actually be an improvement and help accommodate the the added units and and the one additional unit above what's permitted. So that's part of of the site being able to accommodate what's being proposed. You can see the handicap space here and then the three parking spaces in the rear here. So that's really the testimony with respect to the positive criteria for the density variance. With respect to the building height variance, again, in the R two district, I'll flip back to our zoning table. Within the R two district, permitted is four stories. And here's that line item, at a maximum of forty feet. What we're proposing is five stories at five fifty-three feet, seven inches. So this does raise to the level of a D six height variance. The test for that, similar to the density test, is are you consistent with the level of development within the area? And can a site accommodate the added height? So to that effect, you you saw I did reference the one property across the street, two twenty-five Bay Street. This is a five-story structure immediately across the street. We also have, just to the west of that, is another five-story structure. This is four and a half. If these if these windows are, if these windows may not be above grade, so that might not count as a story, but it's certainly an elevated taller four-story structure. There are taller structures along Row Street in the NC district, which is right around the corner. And they're all five stories. So there's approximately five buildings within this local neighborhood that are five stories. Most of the other buildings are four stories, but for this building on this property. And then, as we mentioned, the the one building on two eighteen that was recently approved is also proposed to be a a five-story structure as well. So there is certainly an influence of five-story structures. And I do think that what we're proposing is consistent with that level of development. And in terms of being able to accommodate the added height, again, we are complying with most of the other bulk bulk requirements. But for the rear yard, which I'll get into, we comply with the side yard where in a townhouse setting, you have a zero-foot lot line condition, with there really no impact on adjacent properties in terms of added height. So there's certainly light and air from the front of the property as well as from the the rear yards of the property that we're not impacting. There are several bulk variances that we're requesting. You do need a rear yard setback variance where the minimum in the R two district, and this is different from the R one district, the minimum is thirty feet, where what we're proposing is twenty-two feet. And really, just referring back to the site plan on, sorry, on sheet S one hundred. In this instance, we're trying to max the rear yard of the adjacent property to the left. That's two twenty-eight. So you can see they're approximately twenty-two, twenty-two and a half feet off the rear property line. And that's what we're proposing as well. The area to the to the right, you can see the the back existing cottage house here. They still have an ample yard area. And you can see from the existing conditions, we have a similar area in the middle of the site that's being impacted by two twenty-eight. That condition is just being shifted to one property over. So there's really no substantial impact here, in my opinion. But that's the the impacts of proposing the rear yard at twenty-two feet. It does cut down on the amount of rear yard space, but it's for where we're proposing for this space to be utilized for parking. And that is why we are proposing the the rooftop deck that was covered by the architect. So I won't flip to that sheet unless anyone has questions later. But we are proposing a rooftop deck that will make up for this lack of rear yard space as a residential amenity. I know the city and the zoning and the planning staff look to try and account for that in some fashion on in residential projects. This this space will also be paved, so it will help with reducing the impact from from stormwater. And that leads me really next into my, the next two bulk variances for building coverage and lot coverage. Just flip back to the zoning table. I hope I'm not giving anyone shutter effect from from all this moving screen. So we have the building coverage and lot covers listed here on these two lines, sorry. With respect to building coverage, that's going to be a substantial increase with this project. You can just see from the prior square footage of the of the existing home where it's at twenty-eight point nine percent. And what we're proposing here is seventy-seven point one percent. You can you can see we have zero, zero side yard setbacks. So that's really advancing the intent of townhouse style development. And for the length of the property that we're, for the building that we're proposing, it adds to the overall square footage. We are also trying to match the existing front yard setback. And I can flip to the site plan again. So you can see here, zero side yard setbacks means that the building is gonna occupy the whole width of the property. We're maintaining the rear yard setback to two twenty-eight as well as the front yard setback, having it close to the the property, the front property line. This building footprint also, it was part of the the vision of the project, also allows for three-bedroom units, which is unique to have all four units being proposed as three bedrooms. Typical developers who are looking to rent these units or eventually sell them will look to have a mix of units. I know the city likes to see a mix of units. And this board often requests that because the alternative is applications with studios and one bedrooms. In this instance, it's the opposite. It's really the goal of this this application to provide for larger three-bedroom units, family-oriented units. And in order to do that, you need a larger building footprint. And that's where we round out, landed with the the building coverage calculation. So I think it's a benefit. Certainly, the the lot is conforming, so there's no hardship here. But we think that the the units, the consistency with the setbacks, meeting that form, that townhouse form, is is what this project is advancing. With respect to lot coverage, they really go hand in hand. This property is more or less occupied by the building. So just referring to the zoning table again. What's being proposed in terms of lot coverage is the ma, is what the what the maximum in the R two district is eighty percent. What we're proposing is eighty-six percent. So as we've mentioned earlier, the existing property is predominantly improved with the building, but more so a lot of the concrete and patio and other structures, accessory structures on the property. So we're really only increasing approximately seven percent over the existing impervious coverage. But to make up for that increase in the request in the variance, as I mentioned before with the building coverage, we are providing a grass paved area in the rear yard as well as roof deck, a green roof on the on the roof deck. So that's that's trying to mitigate the impacts of the additional lot coverage. The one last relief we need, it's a product of trying to address the parking issue. On lots that are twenty-five feet wide in the R two district, you are not permitted to have a curb cut. Even though the requirement is to have one space per unit, when you have a narrower lot, that requirement goes away and you're actually not permitted to have a curb cut in parking. In this instance, we see it as a benefit. It helps reduce the impact of the additional unit. These are larger units, typically larger units are filled with families who do rely more on automobile use. I'm not saying that's everyone's specific situation, but based on the statistics, families generally have to drive children places. They can't always walk. So that's, you know, that's trying to address that that situation. So that's why we are proposing parking where no off-street parking shall be permitted. We are also permitting. We're also complying with the curb cuts. And I can flip to that just to show the board what I'm referencing, the curb cut width of ten feet here. So we're complying with that. We did have a balcony, the the variance at one point, but I think we modified that to comply with the requirements of of balconies, so that was removed. And let me just briefly touch on that use variance. If the board or at at some point, the staff does see this as a use variance, my testimony addressing the density and the height really does amount to the fact that this property is of a suitable size and in a suitable location to accommodate the quote-unquote multifamily use. That multifamily use is just any use greater than, generally speaking, is any use greater than a one or two-family residential home. So we're, if we were to be categorized as a multifamily, I do think that this site is particularly suitable. It's not a an undersized property. We're not proposing any sort of dimensions that are not functionably. The the proposed ground floor has both the two means of egress, which is required, as well as the drive aisle, which is the suitable width for vehicles to travel down and park and circulate in the rear here. So I do think that the site is particularly suitable to accommodate this multifamily quote-unquote, which is actually very similar to a townhouse style development. Kissing gears to the negative criteria, and sorry if I'm long-winded, it's just a lot of ground to cover with this application, given the the R two district standards. The negative criteria, in terms of impacts to the general welfare, obviously, we tend to look at the streetscape and what the changes are there. streetscape and what the changes are there. We are introducing a curb cut, which generally the, the city does not advocate, but we have located that curb cut immediately adjacent to the no parking zone for a fire hydrant. You can see the hydrant called out here on the adjacent property. That no parking zone roughly extends the lot line and then we're just increasing it to really, and what this does is it consolidates the area along Bay Street that vehicles can park on the street. So that's, that's a benefit to this location of, of the drive of the curb cut here. And we did, I did look closely, there are only two other, or will only, are only two other curb cuts along this on Bay Street, along this frontage. There's a one-story garage further west that has a pretty wide curb cut. That's near the corner on the west end and then on the eastern edge is the, the existing curb cut, but what will be associated with the two eighteen Bay Street project. So that's the only two other curb cuts, in my opinion. Given the location and the fact that there's only three curb cuts, I don't see a substantial impact. We're not creating a condition where we have a really segmented streetscape. So I think it's, it's no substantial impact with respect to what's being proposed. We're actually improving, as I mentioned, by relocating the street tree in a little further west and also widening the available walking distance by removing a staircase. There's more room for pedestrians and, and other people to walk. With respect to the impacts from the bulk, bulk of the building and providing light and air, as I had mentioned, most of the impacts to the building to the left, two twenty-eight, there really aren't any. There's a, a approximately three foot separation, which is typical in, in the downtown. That's for both app, there's alleyways on both sides. And the rear yards are still left uninfluenced by the proposed, the proposed building and what we're proposing in the rear yard. There will be some new cat shadows cast on the Jason property on two twenty-four. But again, I said, as I mentioned earlier, this is any building that would otherwise comply with the rear yard would have the same impact. So in my opinion, there's no substantial impact because it would still be a product of a conforming development. With respect to the zone plan or zoning ordinance and any sort of substantial impairment, again, I, I think in really delving into the townhouse definition, I think we do need that. So we are permitted use in, in my professional opinion. So I don't think there's a substantial impairment of the zone plan. In terms of the relief we need, I, I think we're consistent with a lot of the other development in the area in terms of density and height. So I don't think there's any sort of substantial impairment to the zoning ordinance. We're really in a downtown section, that first residential fringe from a lot of the mixed-use NC district development right around this neighborhood. So we're that first residential fringe. And I think this is an appropriate transition from that higher density in this downtown area. I think I've covered most of my direct testimony. I always end with the general planning goals because they're, they're really lofty. And one could say any project might advance one goal or another, but in terms of providing the board the, the full picture, this project definitely advances several goals. I do think it's an appropriate density for the neighborhood. So it is definitely a location of appropriate densities and populated population in this section of Jersey City. I do also think that in terms of the proposed facade and the elements of the materials that it's a, it would add to the desirable visual environment, which is purpose eye. So I think it, it really does advance those, those requirements. Those goals of the municipal land use law. So I think I've made my way through most of my direct testimony. I don't know if there are any additional questions on internally or from the board, but I'm going to end it there.
Yeah, I don't have any further questions from Mr. Height, so that would, unless the board, I mean, that completes our, our affirmative presentation.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, I just have a point of clarification. I guess Mr. Height can clarify. There will be water retention and also there will be some sort of a green roof on that building?
That's a good question. I, I don't believe this project is proposing any sort of stormwater detention. And I can have the architect walk you through the green, green roof elements, if there are any. I believe we had called them out.
Sure, Charles, I'll jump in. Yeah, we, we, that's correct that we don't have a stormwater detention or retention system in the backyard. We only have the permeable paper area and then on the roof, we have the, the roof tray system, which does allow for a small amount of stormwater retention.
Okay, so on the roof, there is a small water retention and there is going to be greenery.
Correct.
Thank you.
I have a number of questions.
Yes.
First, I'd like to say that my questions are business, not personal. I love all three of the professionals on this project. And the first thing I want to say, which I've said in other projects, is you're kind of stretching definitions. This is not a townhouse because a townhouse has to be sharing a common exterior wall. This is in our two district and although it's rare and it's small, it's an R two district. It might be surrounded by non-R two districts. You have to abide by the R two district rules. And what I'm hearing here and what I read this afternoon is this is like bringing a bazooka to a kid's water pistol fight. You're asking for a whole lot that makes almost no sense in this location. The the idea of putting parking in this location on a street on that side, I mean, this street in general is not the most beautiful architectural design street, if you look at both sides, but there's no reason for why at this moment we should try to make it a little bit worse rather than a little bit better. It makes no sense to me to put parking. I don't know the motivation to the owners, but to me, you're taking away some greenery to put some parking in. And if I, if I lived in a city, I'd prefer a little greenery. And in the, in your written documentation, you made the points that suitability, this was two tenths of a mile, roughly two tenths of a mile from the Grove Street pass station. And there's numerous bus paths, bus lines moving around. To me, that's an argument why you don't need parking in this structure, not that you need parking in this structure. And I have a question for Mr. Lewis, a couple of questions real quick. The tree in front, the tree, this, the street tree that you're making out and replacing. Will you be replacing it with kind of a more mature tree or a little sapling?
I think there are definitely requirements for the department and they don't allow us to do little saplings. I think, I'm not sure what the minimum caliper they require is, but um, we could up that a little bit if it's something you would prefer.
Well, I mean, you have some mature looking trees on the block and that, you know, what I see, what I see.
The tree, correct, but the tree in front of our property, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Rothman. You didn't finish.
Looking, I, I, you know, I saw the same street scenes that, that Mr. Height showed today, so I guess they're the same thing. There's, the trees on that block are relatively, you know, have some maturity to them. But I see when we build, when we build something new, we put the little thing in this, I'm not, I'm not a technical horticulturist, so I call it a sapling. But it's a skinny little tree that probably won't be a nice tree for about twelve years. So is there a, is there a plan by the owner to put a tree in that's more mature and gives more shade on his property and fits in more with the block or just a minimum tree that's required? If you know.
Again, I, I, I think we have, I'd have to ask Chuck, but I imagine that making that a condition of approval to provide a more mature tree than, than what's typically required would, would be acceptable.
I'm sorry, Jeff, I'll jump in. We can absolutely do that. We could provide for a more mature tree. Your, your comment is understood.
Okay, I have a, a sort of a technical question. When you were showing the little diagram that from the, across the street, a person would not see the structures on the roof. I assume one of those structures is the top of the elevator system, is that correct?
That is correct, yeah.
Okay, I have a, I just, it just dawned on me as I was listening and looking. When you do that, I mean, essentially it's, it's a, a Sosselys triangle. When you do that, are you starting at this, at the street level or are you starting at the eyesight level of the person across the street?
I'm going to bring it up for you.
Well, in, in general, I mean, you're familiar.
I'm going to show you. We start at the eye level.
Okay.
I think you can see it now. We go from the eye level of five, of a, we go from five foot six height. That's where our eye level of a, I don't know, probably a standard man, because that's what we use. That's what everyone seems to use. And then you can see the angle going up and you can see here, this is that, that second structure. And then this is the, the penthouse for the elevator. So it's really pretty far back from there.
All right, great. And to tend this on a positive note, my main problem has to do with the extra height, the extra height due to using the first floor for parking. If you did away with the parking and you made the first floor a living space, you would come down in height, a building more consistent with the roof lines of the townhouse buildings or townhouse looking buildings on that street. And it was south, to me, that's the biggest detriment is, you know, taking a townhouse look building on a block that actually has some townhouses by definition and sticking up, up parking, you know, a curb cut and parking in there, taking away the backyard. You know, this, this, this looks to me like someone who said, this is what I want. This neighborhood is the wrong block for what I want, but this is where I want it. This, this, this structure definitely does not belong on the street the way it's proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other questions or comments from the board at this time? Questions or comments from the public? I do see that there's two people raising hands, three people, four people, five. Wow, a lot of people raising hands. So Lindsay, how do we want to do this? How do you determine who the first person is on this list?
I mean, I do remember who raised their hand first. Go down the line from there, but so for those of you on the phone, I, I don't know your names. It just shows the phone number. So I'm going to call you by the last four digits of your phone number. You'll be allowed to speak and then you'll be sworn in. So just hold off for a second until Bridget swears you in before providing your comments. So I'm gonna call on the last four digits of your phone number are three, six, two, four. Again, three, six, two, four. I'm allowed to speak.
And as a reminder that this is two, two, six Bay Street.
All right. So I just allowed them to speak. So again, if your phone number ends in three, six, two, four, you should be able to speak. And you are.
Hello? Hello? Okay, great. You can hear me.
Yes.
Okay, so my name is Stefania McCall. I am the daughter of Joan Miklus, the property owner at two, two, four Bay Street. The building next to two, two, six.
That's, that's great. Thank you for joining the call. And then Bridget's going to swear you in before you provide testimony.
Sure.
Okay, and I am not going to swear you in. You are putting yourself under oath since you do not have a picture. I am going to ask you, when I start speaking, to state your full name, provide your address and verify that you are who you say you are and your testimony will be included as if you are under oath.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, my name is Stefania McCall. That's S as in Sam, T, E, F as in Frank, A, N as in Nancy, I, A. Last name McCall. That's my married name, my maiden's necklace, but my married name, M as in Michael, C, C, A, L, L.
And your address?
Address is two, two, four Bay Street. Again, I'm the daughter of Joan Miklus. That's J, O, N, M as in Michael, I, K, L, A, F. And she's right next to me. So you can consider us both speaking. I'll speak for her, but.
Okay. You're free to go ahead.
Okay, so a couple of things. I was curious. I know it was mentioned that a meeting or this plan was presented at a Harsimus Cove meeting. I had no idea. I didn't receive notice. I usually get email notices of those meetings. And I was curious to find out, and I can reach out to the Neighborhood Association to see how many people from Bay Street actually attended that meeting, because the first time that I've heard of this project was when we got the letter. And while it did conform to the ten day notice, it was dated May sixth because of the delay for COVID during the COVID pandemic and the delay in the United States Postal Service, we actually didn't get it until May twentieth. So we had very little time to prepare for this meeting. And in fact, I would recommend, I'll express some of my concerns and ask some of the questions I have, but I would like to recommend that we table this vote or this approval until we have ample or enough time to prepare and review our property rights. So I think what's important to consider here, and Chuck Harriman said it the best, it is definitely not the same circumstances to eighteen Bay Street. It may be a replica in planning, but it is definitely not the same circumstance. So at two eighteen Bay Street, they had an empty lot to work with, with the rear of buildings and only the side of another residential building. In this case, this is a very historical property. The fam, the Moore family owned this. We are only the third owners. It was the father who passed it to the daughter and then she gave it to my mom at two twenty-four. But the Moore family actually owned two, 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 four and two, two, six, with the original house being our rear cottage house. That was their first house. And in fact, two, two, six had their own cottage house and they were attached. So that was, those were the original buildings on the lot as well as the carriage house in the front. So a lot of people wonder why two, two, six is so out of place, right? Why is it a two-story building on what essentially is a four, well, not four, but a three-story building block? And the reason for that was because Mrs. Moore, her father, had a horse and carriage and that was a carriage house that they later converted. The front properties were then built later. They lived in the back, the cottage houses. And Mr. Moore had the front buildings built, two twenty-four and two twenty-two. When it was time to sell the properties, and this is in the nineteen sixties, Mrs. Moore divided the lot by essentially separating plumbing lines with the understanding that there would be a shared alley. So my question is on, you know, it was referred to that our alley was three feet, but in fact, it's five point twenty-five approximately. So five point twenty-five feet. And it has always been shared since the property has been built to gain access to the rear cottage house, to be able to move appliances, to be able to move furniture. So we have a few issues or questions regarding that. So that's the first thing that I wanted to, to point out is the historical nature of this property and to understand that, you know, obviously the history behind it. Okay, um. I understand that the proposal is to be raised. My first question is, has it been approved to be raised?
Yes, we have a determination of significance that allows us to demolish the building.
Okay. So with that, I mean, obviously, we would prefer that it not be raised, and not that we're saying not to build, but that, you know, an extension can be built backwards, you know, onto their property, to the rear. But if the building is to be raised, we definitely don't agree with five stories. We definitely don't agree with parking. It is not in line with the properties on this side of the block. The two curb cuts that you refer to were garages. And the one that is currently still a garage, because in the 60s, there were mostly garages on the block, which is why 218 was such an open lot and was later converted just to parking. In terms of the alleyway, how did you determine that there is only three feet between us?
Um, it's not that there's three feet between us. It's that the property line is dividing that alleyway roughly in half. So it's about three feet yours, three feet ours.
Okay. So again, I would request, you know, we're taking a number, right, we're estimating at six feet and dividing that in half. I would request some time so that we can review our deeds. On the application, there was a question that said, are there deed restrictions, covenants, and/or easements affecting the tract? And it was marked no. And perhaps it wasn't marked on their deed. We'd like some time to review our paperwork. And without this going for approval, maybe we can have this discussion another time. If we could table this till another time so that we can review our paperwork for those easements. Our concern is, how are we going to move our furniture, our appliances, in and out of our cottage house with only three feet?
Um, I guess I'll answer that. I would say on our paperwork, there's certainly no, there's no easement on our property. We've gone through our deeds. We've gone through our survey. It's part of the process here. And there's definitely no easement on our property. And three feet is basically what the minimum is for an alley. It's what, it's kind of, that's what the code requirement is, three feet.
Okay. So.
We have reviewed that issue. There was, to have the owner look at, to see if there is any easement. There are no, there are not any easement documents for that alleyway.
Okay. So again, I would respectfully request that we have more time to review our paperwork to determine that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I mean, are we still on a time limit with these people? And also, I think if the call is finished, we can take a break, because I believe the recorder needs a break.
Sure, we can take a break. Bridget, do you want to take a five-minute break?
Yes.
Um, can I, I am not finished. I was waiting for an answer, if that's possible, to table the approval till another time.
With all due respect to her comments, we'd like to move forward tonight. The easement issue is something that if they discuss, we've looked into that. There's no easement here. If they find something different, they absolutely have rights, you know, on the appeal side or enforce their rights. It's not, I don't think that's a relevant issue for the board at this time.
Okay. And then other issues that I'd like to bring up is that because of the shared alley, that we have plumbing that, and gas lines that run down the alley. There is also a large coal bin that runs from our property underneath the alley and into 226's property. So it's a coal bin that's underneath. So I bring these up because, and also, in terms of our foundation, it's brick and mortar, essentially rubble, right? So I have concerns with that. So with the demolition and with the construction of this, particularly digging into the basement, and, you know, if five stories were to be allowed, I have concerns with the structural integrity of our building.
Okay. Ms. McCall, I mean, these sound like very specific issues that I would suggest that you address directly, going through Mr. Harrington.
Okay.
Over them for your specific property with this specific property. But we're gonna take, you know, a couple minutes break, and then the team can respond if they haven't already addressed some of the broader questions that were raised.
Okay, yeah. Because I just want to make sure that I go through some of the variances that were applied for.
I mean, I don't know, you've already asked questions, and I think there's a lot to discuss. Normally, we allow people to give three minutes. We were being generous in this format to make it, but you've had plenty of time. You've asked a lot. So I don't think that there's more questions that you're going to raise.
Okay. All right. So just, you know, please let the record show that we're not against the multifamily unit. We would, it is our two zone. We don't agree with additional height and definitely no parking. And we would ask that additional waivers, if necessary, do are put on notice.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Josh, I believe we're ready for a break?
Yeah, yeah. Bridget, however long break you need, let's take a break. It's currently 8:27. When do you want us to return? 8:32?
8:33.
Okay. We'll be back on the record in six minutes, 8:33.
Hey, Bridget, I tried.
Thank you, Rich.
Okay.
Bridget, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry that I wasn't looking at the comments.
Oh, no. That's fine. I would have said something by 8:30.
Okay. And I hope it's okay. I got something to eat.
Now, when we're back on the record, please.
Okay. We're back on the record. So, Mr. Harrington, I didn't know if there were any open issues from the person who spoke from the public, Ms. McCann, that you wanted to address, other than what you've already said. And just to state further to the other people from the public, try to be as succinct as possible in your testimony. I think that you can get your point across. Probably in 30 seconds, the board will know what you're talking about.
Okay. So, yeah, very briefly, yeah, obviously, we, you know, agree to disagree. We think that the height and the parking is a critical element of this project, similar to the project right down the street. We think it is a benefit. We're understanding is that it is very difficult to find parking here on this particular street. It's like its own little island, if you will. So we think it's an overall, you know, benefit. And then as far as the, as I said, the easement, we've checked the records. There's no easement in place there. So it's, you know, that's where the property line is. But as far as the basement and concerns about construction, we are absolutely willing to move, you know, reduce the size of the basement. So we move it away from, was it 224, I believe, is their property? And that would, you know, eliminate any concerns about, you know, any effects on their property. So we're absolutely okay to do that.
Okay. Thank you. Lindsay, do you want to bring in the next person from the public?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Just a point. Can we please keep a time on the people?
Yeah, that's what I was about to, I was about to say. I could take time on my phone and hold it up periodically. So they know how much time is remaining.
Sure. And just advise the caller.
Yep.
I'm aware.
Thank you.
So, what was I gonna say? Do we want to do five minutes?
Three.
Up to you. I mean, I would try to, let's, I would tell people three as a starting point. Again, I think most people can get their point across in 30 seconds.
Okay. So everyone who's planning on speaking, just be mindful that you'll have three minutes. So just be mindful of that time. So the next on the list is someone on the phone. The last four digits of their number are 4651. Again, 4651. I'm allowing you to speak. And you are unmuted.
Can everybody, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So for the record.
Please state and spell your full name and provide your address.
Sure. My name is Sarah Ordway. That's S-A-R-A-H. Ordway, O-R, D as in dog, W-A-Y as in yak.
Address?
My, my address is 284 Fourth Street.
Okay. And you have verified that you are who you say you are, and your testimony will be treated as if you are under oath. Do you agree?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Ordway, feel free to proceed. And you'll be counted.
Thank you. Thank you. I will keep it brief. My name is Sarah Ordway. I am the president of the Harpsmith Cove Association. I just wanted to say a few things briefly. One is, we were reached out to by Robert earlier in the, I would, I believe it was early March to speak at our March meeting, which I was not at, despite being president. I was unable to be at that meeting. And so I had our vice president of communications, Elena Little, run that meeting for us. At that meeting, what we had agreed to was a brief, sort of in the announcements period, where people can stand up and say something, a brief announcement about the project. But this was not any sort of formal approval. We also heard from Robert Garcia again in early April, asking once more if we would review the plans. I sent it to our development chair, Jacob Smizer. So he and I reviewed the plan and gave the, gave the feedback about there being a facade more congruent with the rest of the neighborhood. That being said, I just wanted on the record that Harpsmith Cove Association did not have a formal meeting regarding this project, where the project was presented in detail. I also wanted there to be on record that my and Jacob, sort of initial, this is okay, looks okay, is not in any way a formal written letter. There was no written letter of approval for Harpsmith Cove Association. Now, in normal circumstances, what would have happened is we would have had this team come to the HCA meeting and give the presentation, and then they would leave and we would give our, sort of, the community would talk about it, and then I would send a letter to Tanya, asking or, you know, giving approval or to the powers that be. So anyways, just to wrap up, I wanted to make sure that was on record in terms of there being any sort of formal approval of the project. I did give my personal okay with the facade not really taking into consideration or realizing the parking situation, mainly because I looked back at the email, and it was on April 15th, which was the height of the pandemic. And to be honest with you. which was the height of the pandemic. And to be honest with you, it's been a really difficult few months. So, yeah, that's, that's all I wanted to say. Also, I wanted to add one last thing, which is that I was reached out to by some members of the community once they received this letter, which was only a few days before. And they had some reservations, which then gave me reservations, just because I want to make sure that our community is represented. And so that's what I wanted on record, and I will. I am done.
Thank you.
Very much. Ms. Ordway, one question. If you've known about this project, or the association has known about this project since March, how many meetings have you had since March?
None.
None? Is there an intention to have any meetings of the Neighborhood Association in the next couple of months?
Yeah.
So you've worked out a format to have them?
That we are having a meeting on, next week, on Wednesday, the board, so that we can discuss how to move forward with Zoom and have virtual meetings. We are planning on having a meeting about the pedestrian plaza updates, which will be a special meeting, not our regular meeting. Usually, we adjourn for the summer, but we may try to have a meeting sometime in the summer, given the circumstances and given the fact that we haven't been able to have a meeting for the past few months.
Okay, and if you were able to, it sounds like next week you'll know, kind of, what plans you'll have for the next couple of months, would you be in a position to inform the people on this call, both the applicant or the applicant's attorney and the neighbors of any potential meeting that would take place in the next couple of months?
Yes, and furthermore, I would make, or the board would make space for this project to be presented in a more formal manner, should the developer and attorney want to present it to the Neighborhood Association in a way that more of the community could be there, and the members could be there to give their approval and weigh in.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Lindsay, do you want to see if anyone else from the community is here?
Just give me one moment. All right, so next hand that is raised is Christina Valdivia Malik. So I'm gonna allow you to speak. Again, last name Malik. Apologies if I mispronounced that.
Yeah. My name is Christina Valdivia Malik, M.A.L.I.K. I live at 443 Second Street in Jersey City.
So your full name for me?
Yes, Christina with a K. Last name Valdivia, V as in Victor, A.L., D as in David, I, V as in Victor, I.A. And my married last name is Malik, M.A.L.I.K.
Okay, and Ms. Malik, you represent that you are who you just stated that you are, and your testimony will be treated as if it is under oath. Do you agree with that?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
So I'll keep this very short and sweet. We are, my husband and I are very, we like the front of the building. It still has that historic look to it. And it will fit right into, you know, Jersey City. It's great that families and working couples can use a three-bedroom apartment. I know that, you know, we might not have kids right now, but we have been looking into three-bedroom places, and, you know, this would be amazing. And my last point would be just that personally, parking makes a lot of sense because being so close to shops and restaurants on New York Avenue, it's, it's a lot better to, you know, have a parking spot than have to look around for parking anywhere. You can't assume that everyone who lives there works in the city. Like, I don't work in the city, so I have to park inside my building, which is a huge thing for us. My husband does go into the city. However, he also has to use the car sometimes to go to different parts of the city, because, you know, it's a little further than necessary. But overall, we love this property, and we, we hope that it gets passed.
Great, thank you.
All right, so next is another person on the phone. Last four digits, 1266, and 1266. You are unmuted.
Okay, thank you. Yes, hi, my name is Michael Asoulin. M.I.C.H.A.E.L., last name A.S.O.U.L.I.N. as in Nancy. And I'm sorry, my, my address is, I live in 380 Newark Avenue.
Okay, and Mr. Asoulin, since you are on the phone, you verify that you are who you say you are, and that your testimony will be treated as if it is under oath. Do you agree?
I do.
Thank you.
Great, Mr. Asoulin.
Yes.
Start three minutes.
Okay, yes, so I just echo the previous testimony and keep it very short. I'm a property owner and resident of Jersey City. Moved here, was very excited about the development that was taking place, and really loved the area on Newark Avenue a lot. So I think that the the property is very exciting. I think it's gonna add a lot of value to downtown in general, and specifically that area. I think the additional parking is incredibly attractive for residents, you know, current residents and future residents. And again, to echo the previous testimony, I, I think the, the fact that it's focused on three-bedroom units is also very, very attractive for, you know, working families. I have a family myself, and I know that it's, you know, something that, you know, the existence of, you know, the addition of something, development like that is very attractive to me. So I'm very excited about it, and, you know, fully support it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next hand that is raised is Robert Garcia. Unmuted.
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you.
Hi, thank you very much for, for giving me this time. My name's Robert Garcia. I live at 225 Bay Street, apartment 503 in, in Jersey City.
Mr. Garcia, I just want to verify that you are in fact stated who you are, and that your testimony will be treated as if it is under oath. Do you agree to that?
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm, I'm one of the owners, along with my, my father, my uncle of 226 Bay Street. Myself, my family, my wife, two kids, my father, my mother, both live in 225 Bay Street. And essentially, what we wanted to do with this project, we've been in the community now for, you know, five-plus years, raising my kids here, really enjoy it, and we want to stay long-term. But we're kind of exploding with this whole COVID disaster right now. We're trying to work from home with kids, not going to school, so we do need more space. We were lucky enough to, you know, I think, you know, make good neighbors on the street. We saw the building at 218 Bay Street go up back in 2017. I attended that board meeting as well. And that's really where the idea for this property came from. I am more than willing to, you know, work with the Harmsmith Cove Association. I tried to do just that. You know, I did present at the meeting, albeit, I don't know if it was formal or informal, because we've never actually had an official vote on a, on a smaller project like this. I did email Sarah, and also our head of real estate development committee at the Harmsmith Cove, tried to take all the necessary steps, got feedback from them, incorporated that feedback into the plans, changed the front of the facade, and also got the, you know, we have no problems with this development moving forward. And then after we made the changes, they said, it looks great, you know. So I, I don't know if that's a formal vote or not, but, you know, that's, that's what we received, so we thought that would be enough. As far as parking, we are willing to, you know, get rid of one of those parking spaces, but, for example, my, my father cannot take a bus. He just had a double knee replacement, and he's gonna need that handicap parking. So it's my father living in one, my uncle living in another, my aunt has Alzheimer's. We work together as a family. I have two kids, and my sister and my, my cousin, which is the, the daughter of my uncle, they're both teachers, and they're gonna live in one as well. So, you know, this is, to me, more of a townhouse, because it's gonna be an entire family living there. We do want to, you know, work with our neighbor at 224, so we are willing to kind of make that, I would say, basement smaller as well, to move away from their property line. I think we tried to take all the right steps with, given the environment that we're in. I don't know when that HCA meeting will ever occur. The last correspondence I received was back in, in March. And, you know, the, I think the, the April meeting and then thereafter, I mean, I, I just don't want to just leave this in limbo for the next couple of months. When I did try to go through the proper channels, I spoke with the president, spoke with our real estate, head of real estate development, got their approval through email, it's in writing, sent them the plans, also went to the meeting myself. Representative David Solomon, Councilman David Solomon was at that meeting as well. So I tried to do everything. I'd like to be a part of the community for a long term. And I think, you know, I would like that, that vote for this. And that's, that's my time right now, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think there's two more people.
So next, we have Jim Geist. Sorry, it's a little bit of a lag. Jim, you're unmuted, we can hear you.
I was trying to chase it with my mouse and couldn't get to it. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Your full name and your address, please.
Sure, my full name is James Geist, J.A.M.E.S., last name is Geist, G.E.I.S.T. And I reside at 229 Bay Street, apartment 4.
Okay, and Mr. Geist, since you are appearing only via phone, can you represent that you are in fact who you just stated that you are, and that your testimony will be treated as if it was under oath? Do you agree with that?
I agree.
Thank you.
I, I think it's interesting, first, to point out to, to the folks that, that, that are hopeful of moving into this building, that I think it should be clear that this building does not seem to be available to the general public. It seems to be more available to only Mr. Garcia and his family. Yes, they may have presented this at the Harpsmith Cove meeting, but they, they've seemed to frequently want to point out 218 Bay Street as, as the, as a comparable project. And then that could have very well made this become very confusing, because, again, they, they try to cite how this is all comparable to that. I'd like to point out that 218 Bay Street does not involve destruction of any property, and the structure also does not block any windows of any of the neighboring buildings. This building, if you look at 228 Bay Street, which is a new four-story construction, the living rooms on those buildings are in the back of the building, and this building will block those windows. So instead of having an eastern morning sun, they will now have a nice brick wall courtesy of 226 Bay Street. Because right now, those living rooms overlook the backyard. And I would hope that when a planning board, when they look at an application, and they look at how they suddenly want to build on the entire footprint of a, of a land plot, that they consider the people that have moved nearby. Unfortunately, nobody here, nobody, I don't know if anyone is gonna talk of 228 Bay Street, but I, as a resident, I find that a little bit alarming. I, I want to thank board member Chat Rothman for pointing out the proximity to, to, to mass transit. Yes, it's .2 miles to Google Maps, and I find it interesting how, how they're playing, how they're trying to play two sides of the coin, that, you know, this is really close to mass transit, oh, but yet we still want parking on site. And, and for me, for someone that lives on the fourth floor, I, I find it hard to believe that, you know, yet we're gonna allow another fifth-story building onto this block. This building is gonna sit between two other four-story buildings, and when you consider the height of the mechanicals that are going, that are going to go on the roof for the stairwell and for the elevator, this building is gonna exceed 60 feet.
Okay.
And, 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 and everything that they're citing, there is no benefit to anyone who lives on this block, except for them.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Geist.
I thank you all for your time tonight, too.
I see one more hand raised. Annie Kessler. All right, Annie, you are unmuted.
Okay. My legal name is Margaret Kessler, M.A.R.G.A.R.E.T. Kessler. But everybody knows me as Annie. My husband and I own 229 Bay Street. We have since 1983.
Okay, could you hold up a second? Could you spell your last name, please?
K.E.S.S.L.E.R.
Okay, and Ms. Kessler, since you are over the phone.
I'm not over the phone.
Well, your picture is not shown, so I can't see who you.
Okay.
Okay, so Ms. Kessler, can you verify that you are who you say you are, and that your testimony will be treated as if you are under oath? Do you agree?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, I live and own, I live in and own the building at 229 Bay Street with my husband. We've had it since 1983. I'm also the founder of the Harpsmith Cove Association, which was back in 1999, I believe we founded it. I also would like to thank Mr. Rothman, who made some really good points that I agree with completely. And it's really, really heartwarming to hear somebody on a zoning board, or any, on any board, who, who is really thinks these things in that way. So that was excellent. I first heard of this proposal, I did not go to the, the last meeting at the Harpsmith Cove Association. I usually do go. So I just first heard of this just a few days ago by letter. And frankly, did not have the bandwidth mentally to deal too much with it right away. But when I did focus in on it, I found the following points. 218 Bay Street, as a couple of people have said, is totally irrelevant. For one thing, there's nothing there. It's right next to the Polish Community Center, which is a big massive building on the corner. And to have that as a, and, and most of the people in the Neighborhood Association were against, against it, those approvals. We do not want parking. Many of us do not want parking at all in the building, and that would have to be something that we discuss in a future meeting. 222 is much more relevant. It actually has been built, and it's four stories, and there's no parking that we can see from the street. I don't know if they have something behind it or not, but it definitely does not have parking that comes in from Bay Street. We would like this to be limited to four stories. We would really like it not to go. I think it's a very, very historic building. And I would also like the opportunity to look into that and find out why the historic preservation people felt that it was okay to tear it down. Because I, I have a feeling that it's pre-1870s, but I don't really know, because I didn't have time to look into it. The roof deck, what?
I didn't know if you had further, further comments, or if that was the summary.
No, no, I sure do, yeah.
About three minutes coming up.
Can you, can you try to keep it really brief?
I can try, yes. Who owns, who will occupy the building? Who owns, who will occupy the building, I don't think has any relevance. And the fact that it's three bedrooms could easily be tons of roommates in this neighborhood. This is the club neighborhood now, as you probably know, thanks to what's happening on Newark Avenue. And it could be a lot of young people, not families. The, the roof deck, maybe you can't see it from the street, but can you could certainly see it from our building? And it's going to be very high. We're, we're not, uh, we don't like that. What we would ask if, um, if you do go ahead with this at the four stories, that when you do the construction, you do no pile driving? That you get that thing where you screw, do screw things in or something like that? Because everyone's home and everyone's working from home and everyone's nerves are, are on edge. Also, and we had cracks last time there was pile driving.
I, I, I think that they'll take that into account, whether or not that's something that they need to do, given the, um, the soil quality.
And, well, yeah, I hope they can do it or figure out some way. Because if, if there's pile driving, I'm going to jump out the window. I swear to God, I've been, I haven't left the house. I'm 75 years old. I have not left the house since March 13th. And when I think about pile driving going on across the street, I just about lose my, ugh. Also, if construction doesn't start at seven o'clock, if construction doesn't start at eight, since every.
Ms. Kessler, that's, uh, we're going to, we're going to conclude your testimony.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Harrington, did you want to respond to any of the comments that have been raised by the public?
I think, um, I guess there were, my client, I think he, you know, he's one of the owners. He, you know, made his, uh, you know, position very, very clear as, you know, what he's trying to do here. And he's trying to work with, um, work with, um, the, the community. And by doing that, like we're already, you know, offering to, to reduce the, the, um, size of the basement, reduce the parking. So these are things that we, you know, we can absolutely do. So with that said, we, you know, we, we think it's, we think it's a, you know, it's, it's a very good project and we want to proceed with it. But, uh, we also, you know, here, here's some of the, you know, the neighbors here with some concerns. And, and, you know, going back to the Harrah Smith's Cove meeting, as you heard from my client there, I guess there maybe it was a disconnect there because, you know, for the board's benefit, I, I saw these emails that, that, that said, we're good, we're okay with you moving forward with this. I mean, I think that was almost the, you know, lot, you know, word for word. Cause we had communicated that to planning saying, you know, Harrah Smith's Cove is okay with this. Let's, let's move before the, the zoning board. So there's, there's obviously maybe a little bit of a disconnect. That being said, if, if we can, we'd ask, you know, to carry it to the next meeting. If we can get a, a meeting, a commitment from Harrah Smith's Cove, that we can have some kind of, you know, Zoom meeting between now and the next meeting. So I know a lot of, you know, the VNA has, has been doing that. Who else? There's, there's, uh, or the RNA, all these, all these community groups are doing a Zoom meeting. We can help facilitate that. You know, I'd, I'd offer that up if the board, you know, was, is okay. It's like, we'll, we'll work with them and then present again. I mean, because my client said he did present, um, but we'll present to more people and have a, a greater discussion if that's acceptable to the board and to the Harrah Smith's Cove.
May.
Sorry.
Yeah, may I make a comment? One of the people that talked was, uh, Stephanie McCall. And she brought up a lot of great points, especially knowing that her utilities might be running underneath that pathway. I know Stephanie, I know her husband. So I know that when she's talking, she's actually talking from integrity. And, you know, she brought up a lot of different concerns and a lot of different points to where it is a little bit of alarming that the next door neighbor hasn't even really had any direct communication about their issues with the construction. So, you know, if we do move this to the next meeting, um, I request that you actually, your, your client, get with the McCall's and, you know, see if you guys could work something out.
Okay. And we will. I think my, my client advised me that he had, I believe he might've spoken to Mr. Miklis at the time, so, and had told, informed them about it. Maybe again, it's, it's, it's just a disconnect as, as to the information out there.
Well, the next board meeting we have is, uh, at least on my calendar is June 18th. Is that enough time to get in touch with the Neighborhood Association and have a Zoom meeting? And, and, and report back to us on June 18th?
I mean, I don't know, Ms. Wordway is on the call. Um, but I think those are the two critical things is, one, um, work out whatever the issues are with, with the next door neighbor. Uh, and, and two, um, separately also, um, make sure that this is, I guess, presented again to the, the Neighborhood Association.
Realistically, I think the earliest we could do it is the second meeting in July. I mean, Lindsay, you can verify, but because of how delayed we have to be with the virtual meetings, we are actually pretty full up.
Right. Yeah. You could see it's already nine o'clock and we made it through two and a half applications. So we've been trying to keep it to three or four cases and we already have backlog of applications. That's why we, we added a meet, a new, another meeting for each month. So our next meeting is actually going to be June 11th. It'll be considered a special meeting and then June 18th. And then so on and so forth.
What about the July meeting? Is the, Tanya suggesting the second meeting in July? What, what date is that? Regular meeting is July 16th.
That would be the second, that would be the second July meeting because we're going to add one July 9th, the week before. Issues with July 2nd, because it's fourth of July.
So how about that, Mr. Harrington? Either July 9th or July 16th?
Is there, I mean, my, my thought is to put us on June 18th. And if it's not resolved, then we could carry. But I, I, I don't want to kind of lose the momentum. It's if we, if we push it into July, then there's, there's, there's no urgency for, for the, the Harrah Smith's Cove to, to get together with us and us to get together with them. And I don't think when we come back, you've, obviously we've, we've had a, we've been at this for almost two hours, right? So, um, you've already heard, you know, the, the project, the issue. So I don't think it would be a long presentation or a long discussion going, going back to the board.
Mr. Harrington, can you commit that, that Charles's testimony will also be limited to three minutes?
Mr. Height?
Yeah. I'm still on your, I, I think I can stick to three minutes.
Yeah.
You know, I, I mean, I could see potentially there'll be some changes to architectural stuff. But how could, you know, the, the planning stuff change?
Planning stuff wouldn't change. The arguments will, will most likely, they'll be the same. I, because if, if it changes dramatically that we need more new planning testimony, then it's a different project.
Yep.
Right. The only testimony that should be heard is based on what changed from now until the next, uh, presentation to the board.
Yeah. So, so whatever it would be, would be short. And then the only thing I guess we would also hear would be from the members of the public who would either say, yep, they addressed our concerns or no, we still have concerns.
Correct.
So we suggesting June.
So we could do it in 15 minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So Mr. Harrington, June 18th?
June 18th, if that's acceptable to the board, yes.
You'll have time to.
You have a hand raised.
What's that?
You have a hand raised and it's the president of the association.
Oh.
I don't know if it's valuable just to bring her back on, just so there's some kind of verbal coordination.
Yeah.
Hi, thank you so much. I'll be super brief. Um, I just wanted to say that, that, you know, that we will do our best to try to get this in a reasonable time period, um, given the extraordinary circumstances that we're under. So, um, you know, you can expect to, in the coming weeks, we will work with, um, Robert and his team and try to, even if we need to make a special meeting, Zoom meeting regarding this development, so that the residents of the area can be on record and be heard. That's something that we can put together.
Mr. Wordway, can you, can you start the ball rolling with an email tonight?
Um, I, I can try, yeah, I can try to get something out tonight. I think it would probably be because of, um, Memorial Day weekend. You know, more valuable for me to send it out on Tuesday, but I will, I'll send an initial email that way at least. Because really I will be meeting with the board next Wednesday, um, which is really when we'll discuss all this and then get something on the calendar. And then we can email out, um, an email blast and put that meeting in that email blast that goes out to, um, the residents.
Okay. Thank you.
So it would actually, if, if I could get that email out to you on Wednesday evening would be best because that's when we'll have our board meeting and that's when I will, um, you know, be able to, you know, give a rundown of the board, to our board, um, sort of how this conversation went. And, um, you know, just have that approval that will be holding this meeting and, and then send it out to, um, the developer and get it on the book. Is that enough? Is that a reasonable timeframe for you?
So next Wednesday, you would be able to commit to a, a meeting date. Probably within the following week or two.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that'd work because, yeah, I know from these, these community meetings, a lot, it's a lot easier for people to, to attend because all they have to do is sign in, you know?
Right, exactly. Yeah, unfortunately, I mean, I'm a professor and so I had to transition all of my classes online within a week. And, uh, we're an all volunteer organization. So it, you know, just the overwhelmingness of things, this project kind of got away from us in terms of the formal way that we do things. But, you know, I would, I do want to make sure that we have that formal meeting so that everybody can be on record and be heard. Um, and then sort of come to an agreement moving forward.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Harrington, the one other thing that, that I would ask, but I, you know, let's feel out the, the board on this. I think the other issue is how amenable is, do you want to know, you know, what people's initial thoughts are to, you know, the two issues that I think are going to be the issues are, it's a block and a half from, from Grove Street path and you're asking for parking. And it's five stories surrounded by, um, two four-story buildings. And it's potentially a historic carriage house. So I guess it's three issues.
What do, do I want to hear their thoughts tonight? Is that what you're asking?
I mean, I don't, I mean, I, I, I person, my, my personal view i- i- is I, I, I think it's a little unusual to look for parking in this location. But, um, I don't know what other, what other people feel, you know? Maybe, maybe, I mean, who knows what the post COVID-19 environment will be? Um, I know I, I, I have a car because I don't work in the city and I, I live in a building that doesn't have parking. I also haven't driven my car, even though I work, you know, in the suburbs. I've gone in my car maybe once in the past. I don't know, nine weeks.
Right.
So.
I, you know, if, if people want to share their thoughts, that might be helpful to our discussions going forward.
Anyone want to say anything or just, you know, talk about it in a month?
Let's just, let's just talk about it in about another month. June 18th is going to be here before we know it. You know, and hopefully the president of this, uh, society, he said by Wednesday, that gives him about another week after that. And here we are, June 18th already. So I think it's just, let's move on and, uh, we'll hear the other arguments on that time.
Okay. So, so no one from the board wants to give an indication of, of what they, they may think positively or negatively about this application?
Well, I'll give mine. I'll give mine. I'll give, I'll, I'll give my opinion. You know, just hearing about, uh, Ms. McCall and how it actually impacts her property. And actually, you know, and, you know, how it may intersect with her, with her parameter of her property. Hearing some of the people talking from the association, you know, in all honesty, if this was to go to a vote today, I would probably vote no.
But I believe, I believe that the applicant has already tried to make some adjustments according to what Ms. McCall was arguing about.
I don't know, I don't know what they were. What, what adjustment, what adjustments that they're, that they want to make.
Mr. Harrington, can you clarify that was, were there a couple of items?
Yeah, they had concerns about the, the basement and digging up and, and building right next to their foundation. So, uh, there could be, be an adverse, uh, effect on their foundation. We agreed to reduce the, the size of the basement, so we're not going to build over, over close to her. We'll, we'll move that, that, the, the base, reduce the basement and move the foundation, you know, further, further west. So, and, and we'd remove a, a parking, uh, spot, uh, spot as well. So that reduces, um, you know, parking within the building. So those.
Based on the, the, the three para, like, like issues that I identified or other ones that you would want to identify separately? Are there specific things or it was based on a, a general thought of the, the viewpoints raised by the public?
Well, I wish I could have Ms. McCall here, but I think one, one of the other things was that her utilities ran underneath their, their alleyway. So if, if they were to find out that her utilities actually ran underneath the alleyway between gas lines or whatever, what, what are the probable things that you guys would actually do to kind of either help, help them out or, you know, move it or, you know, because if you're going to do all that construction and all that comes up, that's actually going to interrupt their lifestyle and interrupt them at the moment until things get mitigated.
Sorry, what did you say, Chuck?
I didn't get that.
I said, that's something we can absolutely look at.
Thank you.
Okay.
Fair enough.
I got a question. Is it, is it, is it a ca, is it the case where, um, the, the neighbors who lived there, what is her name? You said.
Wall?
Yeah. Could it be, and I'm not sure, that they get comfortable with infringing on the other property? Because they knew each other? Is it, do you think that's possible and reason why she might be nervous? In terms of digging up the gas line and, and the electrical lines?
Are you asking?
Chuck, I, I can, you want me to jump in, Chuck?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure, Jeff.
Yeah, Chuck, let me jump in. I would say that I kind of agree that I think you, you have a wider alley and you get used to it. And you're kind of, when you're the person using it, you think it's all yours. Even if it's not necessarily all your property, I agree with that. And I would say as far as utilities underneath, if they are on our property or if it's something that we disturbed during our construction, that's something that we would be, well, first of all, we'd be responsible for protecting it during construction if it's not on our property. And if it is on our property, it's something we would have to replace before we start our construction. So we would run and run new utilities for them. And because that's just, if, I think that's something we would be required to do. Am I right there, Chuck?
Yes.
Are we still taking public comment?
No.
There is someone with a hand up. I don't know what that means.
That's why I'm, they're asking to speak. It's, um, Ms. McCall, but if we, I don't, it's up to you.
And, and Mr. Harrington's going to get in touch with her.
Okay.
So, okay.
So, I mean, you got it, I guess, Chuck. I mean, unless anyone else feels like they want to speak, um, I think you kind of know where some members of the board, you know, feel.
Yes. Understood.
So we're, we're going to table this until June?
June 18th.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay, so, um, let me get back to the agenda. Okay, so now we're in executive session. There's no more applications to discuss.
No, we just have two resolutions to memorialize. Is that right, Lindsay?
Yes.
So shall we? Bridge, okay.
Yeah.
The first case is Z19 dash 046. The applicant was Indujit Singh. 3568 JFK Boulevard. That was an application for a minor site plan with D and C variances. That was heard on February 6th. That was approved, seven in favor, none opposed. And the seven that evening were Chairman Jacobs, Commissioners Donley, McCormick, Shadid, Rothman, Netjer and Velardo. All in favor of memorializing that?
Aye.
The next one is case Z19 dash 114. That's in the matter of 66. That's in the matter of sixty-six Hutton LLC. It was an application for an administrative amendment to a final site plan approval. That again was approved. The date of the hearing was April twenty-third. That was approved, seven in favor, none opposed. And the commissioners that evening were Chairman Jacobs, Commissioners Donnelly, Janine, Jamie, excuse me, Netchett, Velardo, McCormick, and Rothman. All in favor of memorializing that?
Aye.
So Lindsay, I signed. Do you want me to email this to you tomorrow?
So like how we did it the last time, you're going to get an email?
Okay.
No, you're going to. Vinny, really quick, you're going to get an email?
Oh, I'm going to, okay.
To sign it.
Okay.
I'm getting an email too, right?
Yes, just like the last time, like the e-sign through Adobe.
Okay.
Is that how we did it? Okie dokie.
That's how we did it.
Anything else?
Um, just really quick, just a reminder, again, the special meeting is on Tuesday for one oh seven Newark. We should definitely time the public comment like we did this time. Also, we're adding, like I said, a special meeting in June for June eleventh. And then another meeting the next week, the eighteenth. And, you know, there's going to be a second meeting added in July, so that'll be the ninth and the sixteenth, whatever the next Thursday. Good thing there's a month in between those two back-to-back meetings, so you'll have a long break. And then in August, they won't be back-to-back. There'll be a week in between like, like normal. So I'll, I'll just send out calendar invites and, you know, links to plans. Have you any feedback with the way I've been doing that? I think the OneDrive link is finicky, so I think I'm just going to stick with the agenda with the hyperlinks. And that'll bring you to the data portal and you could see all the attachments there. That's what we do for planning board and it just kind of cuts out a step for everyone and it's all in one place. You just need the agenda and that's it.
Lindsay, Lindsay, I have a quick question, please?
Yeah.
All right, so let me clarify, July second has been moved to July ninth?
Yeah, I think people want to take a little vacation, whether or not, uh, I don't know how much we can actually do, but.
All right, because I, I'm not going to mention a name, but I think there was one person I've made that, uh, reference to it.
I had a couple of comments.
I made the comment. I, I thought the other people might.
Don't mention your name. Don't mention your name.
You, you weren't the only one. It's okay.
Rich. For mentioning the, um, the, the timing, I, I wasn't thinking, you know, how many people we could have. But, you know, I, I apologize, guys, for, for delaying this.
Well, it's part of the, of par for the course with this Zoom. Seems everybody, it's hard when nobody's in front of you, they keep speaking and then we lose track of time, all of us.
Well, no disrespect to anybody, but that's why I just figured. And then that girl was going on and on and, you know, we have to, you know, keep our, you know, times down. It was nine thirty, you know, look, look what happened. That was postponed, right? I mean, it was delayed.
No, Rich, really, I, I appreciate it. I, I, as, as Vinny said, like, it wasn't something I was thinking about. I assume you have no people really giving any comment.
Yeah.
I'm not getting mad at that, I just, you know. Now, can I make a motion when we close? Make a motion that we adjourn. Back it, yeah.
Thank you. Bye, everybody.
All right, bye-bye.
You have a good holiday weekend, you all.
Bye-bye, yes. We can't do anything, as my granddaughter would say, I can't do nothing.
Forget about it.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, Bridget, everybody.
You're, you're, I guess for a good reason we're doing that.
We'll log off on this.
We're not swearing people, it's where somebody.
They can't swear when you can't see them. We don't know who it is.
Okay.
No, we knew it wasn't Lindsay because we could see her.
Yeah, I don't think, because I didn't enable everyone's video each time. I just kind of stuck with that, but.
Hey, Lindsay, could you ask people, it's easier, they can change their, their name in, in these, you know, if I have this in there, it kind of cuts down. You can call their name and at least we have the spelling up there. People can change their telephone number to a name.
So I was, I don't know if you saw, that's what I started doing. Once they spelled out their name, I just did their first initial last name. Just also so I can keep track of who already spoke.
Okay.
Lindsay, I saw that the phone numbers were go, were going out. The phone numbers were under there. When you looked at it, the phone numbers were there, the complete phone number.
Yeah, and then I renamed. I don't know, could you not see that when I renamed?
Well, yeah, it disappeared after a little while, you know?
Oh, okay. Yeah, I can't message someone on a phone to get what their name is, you know? So I can't rename them with, until.
Know about that. I thought maybe you actually could, so.
Yeah, Tanya asked me that too, but I can give it.
Meeting before we even go on when they're hanging out, waiting for it to be, or no, they actually don't hang out, waiting for it to begin. But once we begin, maybe I just. All right, good night, everybody.
All right, good night.
Night, everybody be safe.